We're going to call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Heysel, followed by the Invocation led by Bob Heinseman.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Fire your heads please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessing of this day and the opportunity to do your work in the city of Chavano Park. We praise you for the grace you extend to each of us in our daily walk, and we thank you for our beautiful city, its residents, and our staff and leaders. We ask that you extend your blessings to all the leaders of our city and give each of them wisdom, clear judgment, and ethics above reproach as they conduct themselves on behalf of our residents. With spring here and summer fastly approaching, we ask that you watch over all of our graduates as they celebrate their achievements and embark on the next chapter in their lives. Whether they pursue college, enter the military, or pursue employment, we ask that you protect them and draw them closer to you. Lord, thank you for all the mothers that we do not only celebrate on Mother's Day, but celebrate every day for their constant selflessness and dedication to their families. And lastly, Lord, please watch over all those who will be traveling as summer approaches. Protect them within our borders as well as those that will be traveling to far-reaching places. Father, your grace and blessings are abundant, and it's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Item three, citizens to be heard. David Pierce. David, if you would give your full name and where you live, followed by Vicki Maisel. Vicki, if you'd be prepared to speak behind him.
David Pierce, 118 Fawn Drive. Thank you, and good to see you again. I just want to say I'm a little disappointed in the way the last city council election was conducted. I congratulate, I believe in the democratic process, and I congratulate the winners, but sending mailings out like this, much of my neighbors were disgusted on, it looks like, official Chavano Park letterhead. You know, I just think that you guys can do better. You know, I think, you know, I've talked to a lot of you individually, and I really was kind of shocked and disgusted that you'd get down that low, you know? So, and saying that, I say that because I have a friend on the State Board of Realtors, and this person told me the whole reason why a person was removed as chairman from Sabour. And they were told that they can't say anything because of negative publicity and that they will be possibly sued.
Mike, let's not talk about any particular council member, please. That's one of our rules.
I didn't mention a name, Mayor.
You are talking about only one person who could have been identified by that.
Well, okay. But let me just say, I just think that all this negativeness, you know, we've got to get rid of this stuff. You know, we need to go with the positive here. So, and that's all I wanted to say, and I hope everyone, I hope this is a great council. I hope this council does what's best for the citizens of Chavano Park, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, David. Vicki Maisel, followed by Maggie. Maggie, you'd be next.
First, let me say I agree with Mr. Pierce. All the negativism is rather disconcerting, and particularly when people send out anonymous mailings, that only reflects poorly on the candidates that they are supposedly for. So unfortunately, mud lands on the candidates they didn't intend. Now, the reason I actually came. Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, and Chairman Randy Smith, please accept this letter as my resignation from the Tree Committee. Since my husband, Mike Colmier, was elected to City Council, I can no longer serve, and I would like you to know that I will gladly volunteer to help as a citizen in any way I can or am asked by the committee. There are a few folks that I believe have done exceptional work on the committee that deserves recognition. Chairman Smith, Public Works Director Brandon Peterson, and Mark Croce with Texas A&amp;M Forestry have worked many hours to achieve Tree City USA honors for our city, and they've achieved this honor for two years in a row, and currently they are working on year number three. Without the hard work and dedication of these folks, we would not be Tree City USA. Kim Lane introduced the city to the out-of-date and unused medicine take-back. Kim and Chief Lacy did all the behind-the-scenes work to bring this valuable program to Chavano Park, and it was so successful that only one city had more poundage of medicines than us, and that city was San Antonio. Randy Wayland was the chair of Arbor Day Celebration this year, and Rhonda made this the best Arbor Day yet. She coordinated volunteers, speakers, and handed out duties to ensure the celebration was completely successful. Howard Marnon and Ken Corn brought ideas to the committee that have come to fruition. Their new tree trimming ordinance and the signs now appearing throughout the city, letting citizens know about the issue of oak wilt, are in great measure due to these two gentlemen. This committee has introduced the fire-wise measures with Chief Naughton, and they are, as I write, working diligently to find more ways to inform citizens of oak wilt and other tree diseases. These members understand that our trees not only create a beautiful ambiance that is Chavano Park, but increase all our property values by protecting them. It was an honor and a pleasure to work with these wonderful people, and I'm sure you'll be impressed with the amount of work they've accomplished and will accomplish in the future. I want to thank you for the honor of serving with this amazing group of people and allowing me to serve on this wonderful committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie's going to be followed by Lee. Lee, if you'd be prepared to speak. Maggie, if you'll give us your full name and your address.
Maggie Kautz, 122 Mossy Cup West. And I wanted to comment on the notice that went out to all of the citizens, either by letter or most of the citizens anyway, or on the website regarding the violation of our water situation. And as a member of the Water Advisory Board, I have answered a couple of questions out there regarding this notice, and I think I got it, I think I understand it pretty well, and I think I got it, I think I explained it pretty well as to what the situation was. But I was thinking if it's appropriate, if we could have an explanation before this group of folks as to exactly what happened and what we need to look forward to, if anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Lee?
My name is Lee Powers. My wife and I live at 109 Elm Spring for about the last 30 years. I'd like to welcome the newly formulated City Council, some return and some renew. It is a heady responsibility to manage the money and affairs of a municipal government, and it will be one of the hardest jobs you'll ever learn to love. I thank you for your service now and to come, and I'm here to not only welcome and thank you, but to remind you that I and many others just like myself stand ready in the background to help with any projects that we may be found worthy to help in. We in this city have a particular love for our community, the way it is, and in some ways, the way it will become. We try to forestall the future in some respects, but it keeps coming. I'd like for you to know that my wife and I have for the last 30 years served as just about everything in this city that you can name. City Council Water Board, my wife was the city clerk, the court clerk, I was a peace officer here, I was the first arson investigator of this city, and the only sniping incident that ever occurred in this city, I caught the individual. I'm not bragging, I'm just saying that I've got blood, sweat, and a lot of tears in this community, and I want you to know that I'm here in any capacity you might find me worthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lee. That brings us to item four on the agenda, Council Member Comments. Mike?
Welcome to Mike Colmier, and thank you all for coming.
Bob?
Thank you for coming. We love the participation, and good luck to the new members of the council, and thank you for your service to both you and Michelle.
Mary Ann?
Good evening. Thanks so much for coming out. I will echo welcoming Mr. Colmier and to say finally, go Spurs, go.
Mike?
I'd also like to thank everybody for coming out. I'd also like to thank the people who've entrusted me to sit up here for the next two years. I hope I can do a worthy job for all of y'all, and to Brandon, I quit the Water Committee. Thank you.
On behalf of Alderman Ross, I'd like to extend her regrets. Unfortunately, she is unable to attend this evening because of a legislative requirement. She is meeting with one of our area congressmen in Washington DC tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, and because of the scheduling of this meeting, she was not able to do both. So we commend her for her service in Washington DC. Brings us on to item number five, Presentation, Commentations, and Announcements. Our first is a proclamation presenting a tribute to the Honorable John Hirscher for his services to the city of Chavano Park as our municipal court prosecutor. Is there anybody from the family here today? No one from the family. Let me read the proclamation concerning John. "I do appreciate Don going to the funeral and Bill, there were several other people there from our community. I appreciated the opportunity to be with y'all. Whereas the city of Chavano Park takes pride in recognizing those individuals who display commitment and dedication in their service to the city of Chavano Park and the greater Bear County community. And whereas the Honorable John Hirscher, City Prosecutor for the city of Chavano Park 2000, until his death on May 4, 2017, was such an individual, and whereas John Hirscher maintained the highest ethical and professional standards as a legal professional during his 17 years of service as City Prosecutor for the city of Chavano Park, and whereas John Hirscher was uniformly recognized for his reputation as a just and fair upholder of the rule of law, and will be remembered and missed by citizens and staff of the city of Chavano Park. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Chavano Park, I do hereby extend this proclamation in memoriam to the family of John Hirscher with our community's sincere gratitude for his life of service." Item 5.3, Proclamation, City of San Antonio Radio Field Day, June 23 through 27. Mike Harrison, if you'd come forward.
Mike, you guys did an absolutely amazing job. We've been doing this in Chavano Park for, since 2003. Fifteen years here in Chavano Park. We appreciate y'all being a part of the community, and we want to recognize your organization with this proclamation. Whereas the city of Chavano Park works with the San Antonio Radio Club to prepare for emergencies and license amateur radio operators that demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing emergency radio communications. And whereas for 97 years, these amateur radio operators donate their services free of charge in the interest of the citizens of the city as well as the world, and whereas these amateur radio operators are on alert for any emergency, local or worldwide, and practice their communication skills during the American Radio Relay League's Field Day exercises. And whereas this year's amateur radio field day for the city of Chavano Park, for the city of San Antonio Radio Club, will take place outside the city of Chavano Park City Hall on June 23 through 25, 2017, for the 13th time since 2003. Now therefore, I, Robert Werner, Mayor of the city of Chavano Park, hereby declare the week of June 23 through 25, 2017, as amateur radio. In recognition of this important emergency, preparing this exercise, and call upon all citizens to pay tribute to the amateur radio operators that assist our city. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. I have turned. (applause) From the San Antonio Radio Club, as the president certificate of appreciation for the city of Chavano Park, and Chavano Park is recognized for the significant contribution of the San Antonio Radio Club for their hosting of its Field Day activities since 2003, 15 years including this year. The Amateur Radio Relay League sponsored nationwide Field Day that's hammed into an environment simulating disaster situation where radios must be operated using emergency power sources and portable antennas. The city of Chavano Park hosting support allows San Antonio Radio Club members to develop and exercise their skills such that hams can provide communication services when all else fails to the public safety organization. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I hope that each of you will tell your neighbors, tell your family members to come out this weekend, the weekend of the 23rd through the 25th, and join with the amateur club. They are happy to show you what they do. You are welcome to join us, right?
Indeed, you are.
And they usually serve our police officers with fireworks and great barbecue. We want to thank you on behalf of them as well.
We're a radio club with an eating problem. (laughter) Is that June or May?
It's June.
June 23 through 25. This week.
Our next item is recognition of the Hollywood Park Police Department. I want to thank Mayor Chris Falls. Chris, if you'd come forward. I also want to thank Councilmember Truman and Councilmembers-elect Moore and Villarreal for their attendance here this evening. Chief Pritchard, if you would come forward as well.
And that was Councilman Howe. I'm sorry. We had that wrong. Sorry about that. Honorable Mayor and council members, members of the public, tonight the Chavano Park Police Department, I have to turn this, I can't face the wrong way. Chavano Park Police Department is wishing to recognize the city of Hollywood Park's Police Department for their tremendous teamwork and effort that they've done in the community in assisting us and other agencies around, of the small agencies, in doing criminal investigation work. I can tell you, a little over two years ago, when I came to the Bear County area from Houston, one of the first chiefs I met as an assistant chief was Chief Pritchard. He is a great mentor. He's always been there to answer any questions I've had, and Sergeant Bass, if Clint will come up, Sergeant Clint Bass, who is his criminal investigations sergeant, as I got here, I've learned that Clint has been very instrumental in assisting our department and our investigator in working very complicated cases of some robberies, some burglaries. He gets a lot of leads, and he mentors and helps the other folks around. That's the type of police work that we all like to see between agencies, lots of inter-agency cooperation. I believe the reason for that is because of Chief Pritchard's attitude and the way he does that, and it's been a great help to us, and I wanted to publicly thank both the department with a plaque, and then I have a letter of appreciation from myself to both Chief Pritchard and to Sergeant Bass.
The proclamation, the plaque of appreciation says, "Appreciation to the Hollywood Park Police Department for your exemplary leadership and selfless teamwork in assisting the city of Chavano Park Police Department. Your outstanding team spirit brings great credit upon your agency and the city of Hollywood Park. Presented today, 15, 2017, which happens to be police officer appreciation."
Today is National Peace Officer Memorial Day by proclamation from President John F. Kennedy in 1962, so it's very fitting that we're awarding them an award today on the National Day for Peace Officers.
(applause) It's my great pleasure to provide this, Chris. I'll let you say a couple of words, although you're not a citizen of Chavano Park, but we'll give you the backseat. I'm just proud to say what Chad and Clint have done for our police department, for small communities like ours. We don't have the resources of a large town, but by coming together, working together, we did. And that's what really matters, is that we all work together, as, you know, as many working on the GDCC and the council suburban cities with the county. It's just about working together in our small communities, and that's how we combine our resources, work together. So, thank you, Chief, for working with our police department and the teamwork that you showed in helping with this as well.
I appreciate the draw.
Thank you. Chris, good to meet you. Thank you. (applause) Appreciate you. Thank you. Appreciate you. Really. (laughter)
Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Chavano Park Police Department. And whereas there have been 15,400, 15,548 assaults against police officers in 2016 resulting in approximately 14,453 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the light of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas 394 new names of fallen officers are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 144 officers in the United States in 2016, of which 17 officers were killed in Texas and 251 officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial 29th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2017. And whereas May 15 is dedicated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and is mandated by Public Law 87726 and amended by Public Law 103322, which directs that the flag of the United States on all government buildings be displayed at half-staff on May 15, National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Robert Werner, and the City Council of Chavano Park designate May 2014 through 2020, through 2017 as Police Week in the city of Chavano Park and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. As the child of a law enforcement officer, I can tell you, some days you get up and you know that your dad is going out there, and he's putting it all on the line. There were many times when my mother didn't know if my father was going to come home. Fortunately, I got to sleep through those experiences. And it is with great emotional cries that I, ties, that I recognize this day for those officers who have paid the ultimate price of service to their fellow man, to the people that they love, and to people that just didn't really care. These officers deserve our applause. Our friends in this community who are our police officers and serve us also deserve our appreciation and applause. So, to our officers and the fallen officers. Item 5.5, recognition of Alderman Allen Barrier. Allen, would you and your lovely bride come up?
I figured she might get up. (laughter) He called you up. (inaudible). (inaudible) stand over here in front of the six deal. For a little over two years, Allen has been an important part of the city of Chavano Park City Council. This gentleman has made every community event that I can remember since Arbor Day before he was elected at full term on council. It's somebody that has contributed in a tireless fashion, his lovely bride has been active in almost all of those activities with him. I appreciate everything that Allen has done and everything that Allen has brought to our council. He's brought a different perspective, which I think has helped all of us to be a better council at the end of the day. And on behalf of the city of Chavano Park, Allen, it is my pleasure and my privilege to present to you this very small token of our appreciation for your public service. Thank you, sir. (applause)
Brings us to item 6.1, Discussion/Action Appointment of Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Chavano Park. Do I have a motion for the?
Mr. Mayor.
Mike?
I would move the nomination of Councilwoman, Alderwoman Mary Ann Heysel for the position of Mayor Pro Tem. She's the only one sitting up here that I'm aware of that's never had anything negative written about her, so it shouldn't be hard to vote for.
Okay, do I have a second concerning Alderman Heysel?
Motion's don't require a second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, do I have an additional nomination?
I'd like to offer a nomination to elect Mayor Pro Tem, for Mayor Pro Tem, Michelle Bunting Ross, please.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, if there are no additional nominations, all in favor of Mary Ann say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor of Michelle Ross, say aye.
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 Okay, we have two votes in one. Mary Ann, are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
And with the unanimous consent of council, Mary Ann may abstain. Do I have the unanimous consent of council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then the vote is Michelle Ross, two votes to one. The motion carries. Discussion/Action Preliminary Platte Establishing Pond Hill East Commercial Subdivision 5.4 acre tract of land out of an 86.94 acre tract of land as conveyed to Rogers Chavano Park Unit 1819 Limited and described instrument recorded in volume 10075, page 1609 through 1624 of the Official Public Records of Real Property of Bear County, Texas. Bill?
I'll get it started, and then we can turn it over to the engineers. On the April 21, the city received a request for preliminary platte from KFW Engineers for this Pond Hill East Commercial Subdivision. On April 24, we met in a preliminary platte conference as required, and we went over the checklist and the requirements associated with that. We passed it to our city engineer. On April 27, we received an approval letter from the city engineer with a number of comments contingent that approval. Coordination occurred between the engineers, and comment number one, which you have in your packet, was struck, but the other comments were then corrected and revised. We received, and in your packet is a revised preliminary platte. This was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 3, 2017, as required. The preliminary platte was approved, recommended for approval with no additional changes after the corrections had been made. So I've included the requirements for approval. Again, this comes to council with a planning and zoning recommendation. That summarizes my, you can see the map here. Essentially, it's three lots just east of the Starbucks with a road that will connect Pond Hill Road up into, between the first and the second plot of land. So if there's anything else, Daryl can answer, any questions you might have in terms of specifics.
We'll entertain a motion in a second, and we'll see where that goes. Do I have a motion to approve the preliminary platte establishing Pond Hill East Commercial Subdivision 5.4 acre tract of land out of an 86.94 acre tract of land?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We're open for discussion. Is there any discussion? Mike?
What, on the center right-hand portion, it says unplatted reaming portion. What's a reaming portion?
Billy Clausen, KFW Engineers. It's a misspelling, Alderman.
I suppose it's supposed to be remaining.
Remaining. Yes, sir.
Mike, if you'll make that change at the, when we, before we get the final platte. Do we have any other further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Good to be with you, gentlemen. Item 6.3, Discussion/Action Appointment of Daryl Dolnick as the Municipal Court Prosecutor, and approval to release request for qualification for an alternate municipal court prosecutor and an alternate municipal judge. Bill?
Well, we read a proclamation which established the unfortunate circumstances for having to bring this agenda item to the city council. John Hirscher was a great prosecutor, and he'll be a great loss. But that leaves us with the But that leaves us with the requirement to appoint a city prosecutor. I've included the requirements in accordance with our ordinances. And again, I'll make note that the city council, I'll just read it. The city council shall appoint a municipal court prosecutor and an alternative municipal court prosecutor, and they serve indefinitely at the pleasure based upon compensation that is determined by city council. In that same ordinance, it also notes that we shall appoint one person meeting the qualifications of municipal judge and also a... There's an alternate judge as well if the primary judge can't make it. So we're actually left with the position of our current alternate prosecutor is Darrell Dolnig. And this city recommendation is to appoint him from the alternate to the primary city prosecutor. Darrell has served with us since 2005. He's, because Mr. Hurnsir has been a regular attendee to the court, I think it's only three or four occasions that he's had to sit in for him, but he has sat in for him here at this court. You can see that he has got a number of different, you can look at his resume, I've included. He is the prosecutor for six cities right now and is the assistant or the alternate prosecutor for two other cities in a teen court coordinator. So, just to kind of summarize, this action is, and what I'm asking for is to appoint Darrell Dolnig as the city prosecutor, but then to go out for release for qualifications so we can get applications for alternate municipal court prosecutor and alternate municipal court judge. More background is that I did contact each one of the cities that he is currently the prosecutor. I got a response, a very favorable response from all, including some mayors as well as city clerks and city managers. Again, Darrell has a great reputation. I will also say that two of the cities that he's currently the city prosecutor, a number of those cities are... Judge Hurnsir, who was our prosecutor, also served as a judge. At least two of those cities indicated to me that they were going to recommend appointment to Darrell Dolnig as the, from prosecutor to municipal court judge. Darrell is here and he's standing in the back right here and his resume is there, so I think I've summarized that. If you have any further questions for me or Darrell, I'd be glad to do my best to answer them.
Darrell, why don't you come on up? Where do you live in Chavano Park?
In Chavano Creek. 207 Durando in Chavano Creek.
How long you all been there?
Since 1993.
1993, okay, very good.
Long time. One of the first houses.
Do we have a motion to appoint a city prosecutor and to go out for a release request of qualifications for an alternate municipal court prosecutor and alternate municipal judge?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second. Do you want to insert the name of the person that you're, and who would that be?
Mr. Darrell Dolnig.
Darrell Dolnig, okay.
Correct pronunciation, sir?
No objections.
Okay.
We are now open for discussion. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to direct to either Bill or to Darrell? Okay, there being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Welcome onboard.
Mayor, may I address the council real quick?
Sure.
I just want you all to know that John was my mentor and friend. And he taught me a lot, but the four most important words he said to me was when I got a call from Janine when I was at Fiesta, that he was in the ER room and John needed to talk to me. And he said, "I need you to take all these courts. I'm not going to be able to handle them tomorrow in Shirts and in Garden Ridge and Hollywood Park." And I got to tell him I loved him, and the four most important words he ever said to me was, "I love you too. It'll be my honor to serve as y'all's prosecutor." John meant the world to me. I will tell you this, if the Spurs played in Chavano Park, your prosecutor would have filed a Class C assault against Jajaja Pertruvia or whatever his name is. I assure you of that. But thank you all for having the confidence in me, and I hope I can lift up to John's expectations as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Darrell. Item 6.4, discussion action approval of Chief Lacy's assessment action items. Bill, we're going to start with you and then Chief, if you want to come on up so that you can answer or follow up on any of the things that Bill doesn't cover.
Yeah, in your packet, it's all outlined, but I'll just remind you, Chief presented his assessment last month. City council directed Chief Lacy bring back the action items for city council consideration. The first thing that we put together was this little matrix here, which identified because he had essentially 18 items for action. So we've listed them, action item 1 through 18. We've got an observation or the recommendation. Chief Lacy has made a priority for that. Then I have identified which action items are Chief Lacy's responsibility, the city manager's responsibility, and city councils'. We identified eight items for city council approval, of which two of them were approved last month, and we're in process of funding those as we move forward. Items 1 and 2 can be combined, and item number 5, code enforcement, are really planning and zoning issues that the chief identified that will be deferred as appropriate as it's solved through that. So that leaves us tonight really with four action items to be considered. And so, some of them combined. And Chief Lacy has prioritized these in your workshop, in your staff summary. I'll just kind of summarize and then I'll let him talk the specifics. Priority 1 was the additional for up to four police officers, which ties into his observations and recommendations 1 and 2. In your packet, we talked about two things in here. The cost to bring additional officers onboard for the three-month period of time, which we would project between now and the end of the FY, which is approximately $22,000 plus the cost of body armored equipment handgun and radio of $8,100. Actually, it's pay and benefits of 13.8 plus the $8,100 for, it's approximately $22,000 for each police officer that you may choose between now and this end of FY. In general terms, again, you bring in a young officer, anywhere from zero to four years, you're talking about $60,000 on an annual basis. We worked that together with Laura and Chief and I to take a look at several of the younger newly hired police officers and what the total cost to pay in benefits as well as insurance and those things are sorted out. I just make note that if the council approves two officers, for this remaining FY would be approximately $44,000. Additional officers would require a budget amendment, which could be presented in June. Funding could be sourced from Crime Control Prevention District Fund or split between General Fund, which currently earmarked for Capital Replacement Fund, $36,600, and the remaining balance of the capital control, the crime control prevention budget. So I'll just, I'll move on to the next one and then you can talk specifics later on. Priority 2 was the standardized shotguns, which was recommendation 10. Total cost to accomplish that would be $7,800. And just for the record, city manager and the police chief say we can wait until the next FY, and that would be something we would be looking for your approval so that we could then budget that in the next budget cycle. Priority 3 is broken into two parts. One is a extra vehicle for the CID officer right now. Currently, the CID officer only, doesn't have a vehicle. They use a patrol vehicle and they have to remove and gather equipment constantly all the time. The idea of this one would be that when we sell, the Tahoe, the last remaining Tahoe is due to be replaced. We go ahead and we'll fund that in the next FY as we currently have scheduled, but instead of selling that, we would simply hold on to that and then issue that to the CID officer who doesn't really spend as many miles on the road. And that vehicle, we assess, will have a number of years left based upon a lower usage of that. The last part of this is that if, for every two, and Chief can talk about this more, for every two officers that you hire, you really need another patrol vehicle. And that can, either way, that can be deferred till next FY as well. Even if you chose to pick two now, we could probably defer that to next year, and that's what we would recommend. But if you hire two additional police officers, one other vehicle, four additional police officers, two additional vehicles, and you can grill the chief on why that would be in a minute. Priority 4 is recommendation 15, which is tasers. Chief is recommending 20 tasers, one for each current officer and four for reserve officers or new hire. Taser is fairly simple, but it comes with a lot of different requirements. There's initial cartridges and replacement cartridges. There's warranty, there's chargers, there's things that you can talk to chief about. Typically, what happens is manufacturers will enter into an agreement. You purchase the tasers as a packet. The more you purchase, the better the discount you get. In this case, chief has gone out for several bids. He's got one that would allow us to bid tasers and pay for it over a five-year period of time of $8,640 each. Again, we believe that if this action were approved, we would initiate that in a funding action through the budget process for FY 1718 implementation. And finally, it was code, priority 5, code enforcement. Chief can talk about this more, but simply what he's really done is made observations that there are areas of the code which prohibit or they govern or regulate certain actions and that in practice that those are practically difficult to enforce and/or haven't been enforced, and that in the future, and not in the near future, but in the future, ideally you would either change your ordinance to be what you want to enforce or you would enforce the ordinances they currently are. Number one on that is accessory buildings and portable buildings, which is obviously being and has been addressed over the last 18 months, and hopefully there'll be some conclusion of that in the next few months. And then as appropriate, staff would be prepared to take other issues to the P&amp;Z, originate through P&amp;Z, all the required public hearings that would be done, but it's not something that we're asking any action or discussion on this night. So with that, I'll, you know, I'll turn it over to Chief Lacy, see if I've missed anything in terms of summary. These are really just packaging his observations and recommendations. See if you have any questions.
Okay, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, last month I was asked by the Alderman to take that list of 18 items and sort of rework it into a priority list. And I didn't want to prioritize all 18. Most of those are things we're already in the process of doing. The things you see here tonight, sir, are the things that, as I understood, you'd like to see, that we want to do in the, either in the current time or in the very near future that are going to require some type of funding. So that's where you see this. To me, the personnel is the highest priority because that's who takes care of the business on the streets for us. That's who we see. That's who provides the services. That's who, when you call, we show up in a very timely manner, and as the calls increase, I want to make sure we can stay on top of that. The vehicle is just a part of the equipment that's going to have to go with it for five years. The nice thing is it's a five-year piece of equipment. It's not a yearly cost. But we will not, even if we hire some extra officers now, we'll be able to wait until the next funding in October to be able to add even one for like two officers. We'll be able to accomplish that both through, they'll be doing field training and we can still use our current fleet. What we do try to do to prevent wearing out the cars so fast is most agencies basically have a fleet time where, once it's driven, it's down for a shift. So for us, working 12-hour shifts, we basically have an A fleet and a B fleet. So if I have three officers on the street, A or B fleets being driven, when they come in, it gets a 12-hour break. Otherwise, you've got a car on the road 24/7. With that, it means it's 24 hours a day driving city speeds and stopping and going, and it's very hard on these vehicles. So we try to get as much time out of them as we can, and by doing these breaks, it really helps. So we would be looking to add one extra car, and then like the city manager said, we would still be looking, our normal replacement would be for one anyway, so instead of getting one car this year, we'd be getting two. That's in our crime control money that's already been offset for capital items that's sort of setting over there anyway. But that's where that comes in. The shotguns, as I've spoke before, a shotgun is a very standard piece of equipment that every law enforcement agency carries in their cars. It's something we hope we don't have to do. It's a very intimidating item sometimes in the middle of the night if I go in a building and you rack the shotgun, and a lot of times burglars decide to come out. We hope we never have to use deadly force, either firearms on our hips or the shotgun, but it is something we use. However, what we have is not a standard police shotgun. We have some standard shotguns. We have some people's old bird guns that they've given us. We have Mossbergs. We have different controls. And when you're in a high-stress situation, everything needs to work the same. You need to know where the safety is, where the grip is. You don't want to be thinking you're turning on the safety and instead you pull the trigger or you release a round. So what I believe we need to do and why it's number two is we're going to standardize those. They will all be a police model shotgun. They'll all be the same. They'll all work the same. And then the current weapons that we have, we will certainly recoup some funding to general funds by selling those back through a dealer. We'd have to sell them through a firearms dealer. So we'll make arrangements to do that. There's several of those that work with the government entities here, and we would get that done so that we could at least recoup some money. I don't know the number, but whatever we bring in, we'll go back into the general funds to help offset, of course, what we're asking for. The tasers, tasers is another, what we call less lethal. We either have lethal items or less lethals. My 45 is a lethal item. Everything else I have on me is a less lethal item currently. In the days courts, we're tasked to have multiple ways to deal with folks. In the 70s, when I started, we had a gun and a 26-inch stick, and if the stick didn't work, we shot people. We can't do that in today's environment unless you want to write really big checks. So we have to have multiple ways to deal with folks. And in today's world with our emotionally disturbed folks that we're seeing on the streets, the less lethals like I'm carrying right now will not function with them. I have OC spray, pepper spray. I have a baton, which of course can hurt. It would be the next level up. The item with a taser, which is a standardized less lethal item that's been out there, is both, it's intimidating to people. No one wants to think about getting shocked. So a lot of people comply just knowing you have it. When you take it out and you have it spark itself, if they don't, and you've probably seen some of the videos, it does, it causes your muscles to tense up so they can't get around it. Whereas with the spray, 20% or more of the population is not affected by the spray. So if I spray someone with OC and it doesn't affect them, now I've got a person covered in that that's going to make me not be able to see, but I've still got to deal with now a more pissed-off person. Same with a baton. So we need different tools for different people. Sometimes you start with one and you may have to move to the other. The other thing is we never know if that's the only thing that's going to work. You know, if I'm standing here and there's a guy at that door and he's standing with a knife, do I want to shoot him or do I want to taser him? I'd prefer to taser him. If I don't have a taser, I'm going to have to shoot him because I'm not going to take a stick out and fight him, and I can't spray him because it's too big of a danger. So what we're asking is to bring us in line with what less lethal issues are for other departments and to try to help ourselves. It's not going to be the answer for everything. We will still train with spray. We will still train with our batons, and the officers will be carrying a multiple group of things. It'll also be very controlled. Everyone has to be trained and they're trained to taser standards for those. They have to be done by taser-certified instructors. They have to do a use-of-force form like we do for everything else. It'll be very controlled and very watched. I don't want anyone to think that just if we get those, that it's going to be, you know, field day to go out and light people up with those. I can tell you that when I went through taser school, I've carried a taser everywhere I've been until I came here. We actually took a hit with a taser. They would shoot us in the back and we got to take the seven-second ride to see what it feels like. I'm still here. Everyone in my class is still here. Everyone I know is still here. There's been a few cases where people that were up on drugs and things may have not made it, but they can't really tie that down to that. But it is very effective, and I can tell you, I was not able to take one step. All I could do was stand there, and then they laid me on the ground so that I didn't fall and bust my nose. And it's a highly effective weapon. The idea behind this five-year program that taser does is they realize they're an expensive item. They actually cost more than a handgun when you put it together. But the nice... But the nice thing they'll do is they'll lock in the price for everything at today's rate. They guarantee, through a warranty, if we have one break, if we break it, if it stops working, we send it in, they replace it, repair it or replace it. They'll send us sixty training cartridges a year. They'll send us sixty-use cartridges a year that we can use both for use or for training. If the battery packs go down, each time you spark it, which you do a test on it, it takes it down from a hundred until you get to fifteen, and then you replace the battery. All the battery costs, a battery for those is eighty dollars apiece. That's included in that. So the warranty includes all of that, and it's all rolled into this five-year plan. So basically, for five years, we're not going to have any added expenses for those. And then, at the end of the five years, they're ours. And then, we would be buying the cartridges and things at that time. Cartridges are about fifty, forty to fifty dollars apiece in the market at that time. But we're looking to do those. Of that, sixteen, I would outfit each officer with one, because every officer needs to have their less lethal, even my detective. I don't need a detective to go talk to a suspect in an apartment. The suspect starts to fight or grab a gun or a knife, and they just shoot them. And then, in court, we're going to have the attorney that says, "Well, why didn't you spray him?" "Oh, I'm a detective. I just carry a gun." "Why didn't you use your baton? Why didn't you use your taser? It's in your policy." "Oh, no." "Oh, so your only choice was to shoot him." I don't want to see us in that boat. I don't want to, I don't want to see how many zeros they put on that check. But it's just, it's a recommendation that I have. It's up to what council would let us do. The eight thousand six hundred is basically the cost divided by, multiplied by five is the total cost for those. But you don't get any savings. If we pay upfront, it's going to be the same price. So there, the taser corporation has said, you know, this is a greater deal for them, because they know for five years, they're going to get a set amount of money coming in. So it's actually a great program for them. And then, as the city manager said, we'll work through P and Z and everybody else on any of these other issues with code. Our code enforcement works very hard. Our officer does. We believe that if we just tweak things a little bit or clarify things so that we know what we're going to do, we can clear up some of the areas that we've had some complaints from, so that we make sure, we want to make sure we're doing what's right for the citizens. But we also want to make sure that when we get complaints on certain issues, that we can deal with those issues. So that's something very germane and easy to do, and of no cost in what I'm trying to do compared to everything else.
Okay. Before we open this up for a motion and discussion, Bill, your recommendation on action for this budget cycle, which items are you recommending, and which ones are you recommending for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
Easy way. I'd like to see an approval of priority one, two, three, and four, with the funding and execution of FY seventeen and eighteen.
Is that for all four of them, that you're asking for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
Priority two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four. And then, really, for priority one, my recommendation, and Chief and I have talked about this, is to authorize the hiring of two officers initially, immediately now in this action, and then to consider whether or not three and four during the workshops, the budget process, to where we come back to you and have further discussion and justify that.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Point of information, please, before. Chief, how many shotguns are you after?
I would be, this amount as seen would replace fifteen shotguns, which will put...
Fifteen shotguns?
That puts one in every vehicle. Three of those will become less lethal shotguns, believe it or not. There's a less lethal method now with bean bags, which we have to look at. And then, so there's ten, that's thirteen, and then the other two, we're using to rotate in and out of the cars when they're down for maintenance. The shotguns are down for maintenance, and when we go to the range, so that we don't have a car on the road without a shotgun.
Okay. Do we have a motion on six point four?
I have one.
Okay.
No, I have a motion.
Okay.
And I'll pass this to you once I read it, because it's extensive. I move that we approve the hire of two additional police officers for FY two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, that we authorize the Chauvin Park PD to purchase fifteen shotguns in FY two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, that we authorize the Chauvin Park Police Department to purchase twenty tasers in FY two thousand sixteen, seventeen, that we authorize the city manager to repurpose the Tahoe currently scheduled for disposal to serve as the dedicated CID vehicle, and authorize the purchase of an additional patrol vehicle for FY two thousand sixteen, seventeen.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, Alderman. So sixteen and seventeen is the current budget year.
Under that.
So you authorized all of those this current year?
That would be the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a second. We're now open for discussion. Bob?
So I, first of all, Chief Lacy, I'm very appreciative of all the work you did on this, and Bill, this is exactly what I hoped we would come up with. Very firm recommendations and boiling it down to what we need. I am, my recommendation is very similar to what I was going to make prior to Alderman Simpson, except I would like to add or supplement that. And do you have a copy of that, by the way? You just have one copy?
Yeah, I wrote it in.
So what I would say is, I believe that the, I would be in favor of hiring the two immediately this year as well. I think we need to use our due diligence in the planning and budgeting sessions with the workshops that we'll be doing to look further into the additional two. I do have one question for you here in a second. So I'm in favor of that. I think we need to go ahead and do the shotguns now. I don't think there's any reason why, with that small expense. To me, even though they're rarely used, if there's any hesitation on how to use a piece of equipment in the line of duty, I think that's not acceptable. So I would agree with Alderman Simpson's recommendation on that as well. However, what I don't want to do is commit to things right now that we have not funded for this year fully. We have some, we have some excess funds, and we also have crime prevention funding as well. But I think we need to be very diligent in what our budget's going to look like this next year. Don't take that for anything other than it is, because I am fully, I brought this to Bill and to Chief Lacy's attention last year, that I wanted this done. So I want to be diligent, think through it, make sure financially that we're doing the right thing. But I'm in full support of all those things. So I would say the things that we can do this year would be the two officers that we would do, the shotguns, that we would also do the tasers, but the others, I think we need to wait and do that in the budgeting cycle for seventeen eighteen.
Just, I just talked to Laura, and we have no problem with ordering the projected police officer vehicle from, you know, that we have scheduled for next year to this year. But the problem would be that if we ordered it now, it would not be here, and it would be, it's going to be FY seventeen, eighteen anyway, in terms of when it will be posted.
Available.
Available. So...
It's about five months.
We can initiate with approval that action, and then, it would probably, it would need to be in the next budget cycle, because that's when it's actually going to be expensed in the first place.
Right. The motion didn't say anything about how to fund, how or when to fund the vehicle, just that...
Okay. Okay, good.
Well, and of course, it's going to take actually budgetary amendments for the crime control district and for the, for our general budget. And so, we're going to have to come back with an ordinance to revise our budgets in all cases for whatever changes that we're making. Do we have any other discussion? Mike?
Yeah, Chief. On the tasers...
Yes, sir.
One of the things that a lot of people have that don't like tasers, and I'm not a huge fan of them, but I do appreciate that they're very necessary in, as you explained, in today's world. There's sometimes in some police departments seems to be the taze-first and ask questions-later philosophy. And I just want to make sure that our training, and I'm sure it will, but that the training will incorporate with the officers, you know, hey, you need to kind of like, you know, identify the situation and go through your motions before you just reach and taze.
Absolutely.
And sometimes, I've known that there's been some cases where the officer just was kind of in a whatever mood, and he just didn't ask any questions. He just tased them and then, and went with it from there on. That's the only thing I have about tasers. So I just want to make sure that we have that.
No, I perfectly understand that. Not only my policy would be dealt with, but each individual time anyone uses any kind of force, it gets evaluated and looked at. And I think you can see from what I've done when we had our other unfortunate incident with an employee that's no longer with us, that I am going to take action. And unfortunately, if an officer messes up, you know, there is punitive action up to and including termination of employment. And that could include someone with a taser. Now, I also have seen exactly what you spoke about, not so much with the taser, but since the seventies all the way forward, I saw it when we went from baton, from sticks to these. I saw it when the OC came out. Everybody sprayed the world with OC. But that calms down, and then, as other people added it, they've seen the repercussions from that. Taser has been out there quite a while now. Our officers know that although it's a great tool, if it's an abused tool, they're not going to be around, and it's going to be a problem. But it's in, it's included in our training, how to use it, when to use it, when not to use it. And it's also, it'll be incorporated into our use-of-force policy. And I can guarantee you, if an officer abuses it, they will not be an employee of my police department.
I understand. And that's still my only concerns. I mean, there's been a lot of cases in the last few years now, on the national scene, where there's been a little bit of lethal force used a little too aggressively by the police officers, which we certainly don't need. My only other comment is, I highly agree on the shotguns. As a wing shooter, a waterfowl shooter, and I do have two shotguns, and they're two different brands, and I mean, we're talking ducks here, not people, but there's many a time that I've missed the shot because I was switched between a gun and I didn't understand the safety, I mean, split second. So definitely, we need to get that out of the way, definitely. And those are my only comments.
It's a, it's the situation, when you're in a high-stress situation, I'm going into a building at night, or I'm dealing with an armed confrontational person, and I'm trying to have that level up, and I need to use it if I don't get the safety off. I don't want to, I don't want to accidentally shoot someone, but I also, even more so, don't want to have to go to an officer's funeral and know...
Absolutely.
...that that officer's laying there dead because the way I trained them and the equipment I provided them was not consistent with standards, and they lost their life because of that. I don't want to be standing here, and wouldn't be. I would be gone. I can't do that. So it's, I'm not putting blame on how it's happened. It's just sort of what they have has sort of come around for years, and people giving them things and just buying a few things off the store. What we are looking to do is buy a Ford or a Chevrolet-type item. It's the workhorse. A police version is just a little bit amped up as far as heavier duty, because it's in the car, and it's vibrating, and it's moving around. I can tell you that it's a pump shotgun, just like all the others with sights, and everybody will be using the same thing, and it'll be a big plus for our guys on the streets.
The other day, when we were discussing this, you were leaning towards, I believe at that time, because of price, the tactical or police version of the Benelli Nova?
The Benelli Nova actually is less expensive than the Remington eight-seventy, which the Remington is what most people have known. And I own one. I own a Remington eight-seventy police riot shotgun and have for twenty years. I have it in my gun case. We had to carry our own in Harris County. The Benellis are about two hundred and fifty dollars less than a Remington. So although the name may sound expensive, they're not. But it's, the Supernova model is the police-heavy shotgun with ghost ring sights, front rifled sights, and it still comes in a lot less than the Remingtons. And those are government-priced. So I've checked around with both vendors for Remingtons and vendors for the Benellis, vendors for the Mossbergs, and that's our best option, and that's the option that most agencies are going to now.
Are these, are you looking at, on the Benellis, are you looking at standard conventional stock? Are you looking at pistol group?
No, it's a standard stock. It's the synthetics, but it's standard stocked, and it has a six-round side saddle on them for, because we typically carry them with double ought buckshot, but we want to be able to have some slugs available and extra double ought. We hope we never have to get to the point to reload, but it's just like my sidearm. I've got ten rounds in my forty-five, but why am I carrying twenty more? Just in case I need it. I don't want to need it, but it's just what we have to do.
Okay. Thank you. Other than that, I pretty much agree with everything Alderman Heinselman said.
Okay, Bob's got another question?
Yes, sir.
So Chief, on the two officers now, and then, what I want to ask you is, I know you have authorization already appropriated to you to use reserve officers. And I know, is it ten that we have?
We maybe authorize up to ten. We don't have ten.
Correct.
The only ones I have that are capable of going on the street right now are all people with professional jobs that are here just to keep commissions. We have one that'll be finishing training here fairly soon. A month? If he was brought in full-time, less than a month. Officer Garza has been a reserve officer now for about eight months, so he's almost finished with his field training. They have to do the same field training as a regular officer. So of course, instead of being here forty hours a week and doing, he's been doing quite a bit on weekends. If he were to be brought in, he would actually be on the streets fairly quick, and that's what we'll be looking to do. Who can we put boots on the ground the best with? With the best person. I want to make sure we get people that fit the right person.
Do you feel like we are maximizing our reserve capabilities for reserve officers to supplement our current police force?
We do, in that they go out on the weekends and the times that they can. They all work several shifts a month, one to two shifts a month, other than our one that does our training, and he does that many hours or more of training for the officers, which we get free.
My question is, do we need to bring in additional reserve officers in addition to the ones we have?
Into the ones we have? We, that's going to be our next area to start looking for our growth, is to add those, to increase our reserve force. It's a very slow process, and one that I don't really want to take on with just the newest officers. What we've seen with the last ones that came in, they were, they were people who just graduated from the police academy. I hate to even call them a rookie, but they had no police experience in their life. What I hope to find, and what I think we will find, are officers who have had some experience and are either in another field, or they've, like I did at one time, retired, but they still want to serve, and they have that level of experience, so that we're not bringing somebody out there that doesn't know how to treat folks or how to deal with hostile situations. We get someone with some experience, and we get it for very little cost. It may take a little time to get that, but in the long run, we're going to get much better reserve officers, and we're going to have a lot less problems with the people we have. I don't want to have us inundated with upset citizens, because we had a brand-new rookie reserve out there, and, you know, he's trying to be the hot dog on the streets and not knowing how to approach people. But we do plan to increase that. The reserve force is a very valid and valuable thing for us to have.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Mike?
I would just note that we had a burglary again last week. We need to get those policemen on the street as quickly as possible. We need to make sure they have every tool necessary to do their job, to ensure their safety, and to ensure the safety of the citizens. And as far as the tasers, I've got a career of the application of lethal force. We put steel on target. I don't want y'all doing that. I would, I want you to have a non-lethal option that will stop an aggressor. So I just think these are things that we need to do right now to protect the citizens, and I understand the questions of budget. The expect, really expensive part would be hiring additional police officers, and that should be talked about in greater detail during the next budget cycle. So I would urge the approval of that motion.
Anything else?
I'd like to offer a substitute motion, of which I've handed to the mayor briefly.
Okay. I move that we approve the hire of two additional police officers for fiscal year twenty sixteen,[1795.66] I move that we approve the hire of two additional police officers for fiscal year 2016, 2017, that the city manager provide an administrative budget ordinance to provide that the, to be provided at the next regular city council meeting to fund two additional police officers, the purchase of 15 shotguns and 20 tasers for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and that we authorize the city manager to repurpose the Tahoe currently scheduled for disposal to service as the dedicated CID vehicle. Is that correct? Okay. Do we have a second on the motion to substitute?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to substitute. Do we have any discussion on the motion to substitute? Mike?
The major thing that I heard that was different from the original motion, the motion that's on the floor, is the additional police vehicle.
Which, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And so my question to the chief is, if we hire two additional police officers, do we need to get them a police vehicle in this fiscal year? I'll get it going.
Well, as the manager was saying, if we by sort of acknowledgement understand that's what we'll be planning to do, and that's okay, we won't need to fund it because it will not be here. If I call them tomorrow and tell them, hey, we need another vehicle, it'll take four to five months. But if we wait till October to know, or even September, and we get it October, then it'll be like now, and it would be April, March, April, May before we receive it. So what I would say is, if I know that that's a workable deal, I'll start working with the vendors to know that we're going to be getting one, and then they can pre-position some items that if it should fall through, they can reuse, but it'll cut our time down. So we'll work with what we have until it comes in, you know, between October and December.
Okay, Mike?
Then a question for our budgeters. Can we commit to buy a vehicle without the line item authority in the current budget?
We have previously, and I've talked to Charlie about this, we have approved items before and then amended it later, or funded it later. So for the attorney, I guess I would ask, could, if city council has approved the purchase of another vehicle? We order it now, knowing that we're going to pay for it, and we're going to include that in the budget amendment for FY 1718. In other words, the budget that's approved will be approximately the, you know, third week in September. Can we do that?
So just to clarify, I think what you're wanting to do is you want to fund it now, but I think in the budget, in the budget amendment, you wouldn't amend, you don't have a budget to amend for next year, so that budget amendment would be, it would just be in the ordinance to give direction to fund it in the next fiscal year. But in the budget amendment for everything else, you would include all, everything that you need for this fiscal year. But the budget amendment wouldn't include anything that's funded for the next fiscal year.
So what Mike's asking us to do is to authorize the purchase this year to be funded in the next fiscal year?
Correct. Well, so your ordinance wouldn't necessarily be, the budget amendment ordinance would be different than directing to go into the next fiscal year. Your budget amendment ordinance is, you're only amending the budget. That's all you need. So you don't need anything, you need a separate ordinance to give direction on the other issue.
Okay, and that's the motion that we're talking about here. Can we, on the motion that the, the substitute motion that the mayor read, actually commit to buy a vehicle and get that going without the council saying, buy the vehicle?
Yes, you can, because that's a part of your budget process, as you're budgeting considerations for your next fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mike?
Worst-case scenario here, you call tomorrow, we approve all this, and you call tomorrow and you order the vehicle that you're expecting in four to five months, and next week they say, hey, we had 16 cancellations, guess what, it's here. What happens?
We would amend our budget to take that into account.
Okay.
I was actually thinking that they would have the understanding that we would not accept it until after October 1st, when the new budget's in place. And they're very used to dealing with the October 1 government budgets.
Okay, just asking a question.
They're a buyboard, state distributor, they're very used to that.
New kid on the block here.
I would actually tell them that, you know, we're not looking for it till after then.
Let me come back to what your question is, Mike. So if the language were to be, I move that we approve the hire of two additional police officers for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and purchase an additional patrol vehicle for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and then run the rest of the language that Bob proposed, which is a budget ordinance to take into account the police officers, the tasers, and the shotguns, would that be something, is that what you're asking for? Because that's not a budget amendment for 1617 on the vehicle, that's saying, hey, we're authorizing this, but we're going to have to put it in next year's budget.
Roger, I'm just, want to make sure that we're authorizing the city manager and the police chief to obligate the city to get this vehicle, to go, put that in. And how that happens is, you know...
However it happens.
Yes, sir.
I agree. I loved your amendment, thank you for putting it together on the go. Would you offer an amendment to Bob's motion to substitute to include at the end of, let me show it to you so that we can look at it together?
I would move what you just read. I think we all understood.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion to amend? Okay, Mike has made the motion to amend. A second, do we have any discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, the motion carries. We now have the motion to substitute on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the motion to substitute? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion to substitute has now become the primary motion, all in favor of the primary motion as substituted, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Item 6.1, thank you very much, Chief, thank you very much, Bill. Item 6.5, discussion action, Public Works Water Department restructures, restructure as outlined for Public Works Water Superintendent and Water Crew Leader. Bill, I'm going to recognize you and Brandon. Bill, do you want to start us?
I'll start it. Last week, when we put together this staff summary, we had two Public Works water positions vacant. We now have a pending third. so since we put this packet out, Chris Graff, who is our newest hire in the water department, has tendered his two-week notification. He's going to, a side note, Garden Ridge, where he's closer to home, and he's got a $3-an-hour raise associated with that. So that's just background information associated with really the unfortunate circumstances leading to, from, for Willie, William Lynch, and then the resignation of Danny Morales. So those two vacancies were really the prompting of, okay, what do we need to do in our Public Works Water Department? The Public Works Director provided his six-month assessment about a year ago. While not directly mentioning in terms of some of these structural changes that we're recommending now, a number of the challenges can be tied into the observations and recommendations. Training, safety, maintenance, day-to-day activities that need a quality supervisor, and not just the Public Works Director himself. Probably, and I say this frankly and ho-hardly, the hardest position in this staff is probably the Public Works Director in terms of his requirements to run multi-echelon requirements from, you know, directing daily tasks to supervising water system, to working with San Antonio, working the P&amp;Z, the engineering, draining, stormwater, all that stuff. So he gets pulled a number of ways. We've offered, and just to kind of remind everyone, our current Public Works Department really has a water foreman, and then it's broken into Public Works and Water Utilities. The organization chart shows a link between the Public Works Director and the foreman that really doesn't exist. It's really a flat organization. You could put down in there the Public Works Foreman, and then flattened servicemen, and both in the Public Works and the Water. The Public Works Director and I have collaborated on this a bit, but we have got an update to two assessments in terms of the organization. One is that the Public Works Foreman is really inadequate in terms of meeting the needs of the city. He's a lower-level crew supervisor, essentially the way that job description's written, which directs the task at hand given by the Public Works Director. Our assessment together is that that needs to be upgraded from a foreman position. We're calling it a Public Works and Water Superintendent. The draft job description's in there, you could call it a supervisor, you could call it as, you know, a number of different things. We looked at a number of different cities and like job descriptions, and we chose to call it a Public Works Water Superintendent. And the idea would be this guy would oversee the day-to-day operations of Public Works and the Water, similar to what a foreman would do, but take a larger role in the direct supervision of the servicemen. In other words, he would be the direct supervisor, he would be giving them the annual evaluations, he would be coming up with a weekly week schedule, directing the task. And the idea is by recalibrating, revising this job description, upgrading the grade level associated with that would come from a 16 to a 19. When we go out for hiring of this, you're going to get a higher-quality person that has more supervisory skills. And I'll leave that at that, and you can, Brandon can amplify that as he needs to. The second assessment is, below that, even though we don't have a lot of servicemen, we have a flat organization. And what you typically have is, whether it's Public Works or Water Utility, but it's more critical on the Water Utility, is you have three guys standing around and no one in charge because they all are equal rank when the foreman is not there. And not to air it out in a great detail, but you know, that causes friction, and there's no even squad leader, chain of command, et cetera. And again, we looked at what other organizations did, you know, not every, every single city is different. Actually, it's very challenging in the time that we've had to even put together this proposal. We certainly acknowledge that we could get more information. We probably need to go out, because you see a lot of Public Works Utility servicemen, one, two, and three, and they're just, their grades and qualifications not necessarily rank. But one common theme that we've seen in almost every city we've looked at is, you have an assistant to the Public Works Director, whether you call him Assistant Public Works Director or Superintendent, some other name, supervisor, and then you would typically have a Public Works Crew Chief or Foreman at Public Works and your Water Division. So you have someone that's in charge of each one of those. So this proposal would also include creating a Water Crew Leader, which would be in absence of the Superintendent in charge of the crew, and the actual, pretty much, execution of the task that's given to him. By increasing that grade level from a 13 to a 16, and you're talking about at base pay, you know, at the lowest level, $3,000, you're going to get a higher-quality guy, you know. So part of our challenge is, it is relatively hard to recruit across all cities, these servicemen-level positions, to ask them to come in and then also to go get your C license, to D license, take somebody that has an ability to take tests and to learn and actually do some, quite a bit of math. The requirements nowadays require that if you get a D license, within two years, you have to get your C license. If you cannot move from a D to a C, then you're no longer certified. So again, without getting into a lot of details, the current folks that we currently have have either, well, they haven't been able to pass the water test. This proposal would create a Water Crew Leader position, which we would, in theory, be able to hire someone with a license right away, which, in light of what our current situation is, we're going to need. So you can see that there's a proposed reorganization chart. The, we're not really asking for the approval of the job descriptions, although they're at a 90, 95% solution right now. Laura, Xena, and I, and Brandon have worked on those over the last couple of weeks associated with that. Just to summarize, and you can ask Brandon anything you want, this motion is to approve the proposed restructure as outlined, which would include a Water Superintendent position and a Crew Leader position. It doesn't create a new position, it reclassifies to existing positions within the organization. And I'll pause and turn it over to you, Mayor, and Council.
Okay. Before we do that, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the restructuring as proposed of the Public Works and Water Departments?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Mike Colomere, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mike Simpson, yes. We're now open for discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mike?
First, I'd like to recommend that the floggings continue until morale improves. But the real question is, what's this doing to our water budget? Has the Water Advisory Committee seen this and sent it up to us? And in the personnel budget, is this going to require us to find some more money?
I'll just say that we did take it through the Water Advisory Committee, and they made, they approved a recommendation to approve this. So in the current FY, you know, in the discussion here, we talked about the financial impact associated with that. Willie was hired at a pretty high, not grade, but years in service, and Danny as well, when he came on, got quite a bit of credit associated with it. So they were in the mid-to-high echelons associated with that. That may be the case, it may not be the case, it's hard to tell. So on an annual basis, we estimated 2,000 to 7,000 total dollars at the max. For this year, because of the losses that we have, and the losses, we're going to have a hiring gap, pay salary gap associated with that, and we don't anticipate a delta of any significance for this fiscal year.
Okay. Mike?
In light of, I mean, I was on the Water Committee last week when we approved this and sent it up. We talked about it for quite a while. And a lot of it was, I don't want to say it was designed to try and give a place for Chris to move up, to keep him, but I know that was definitely a concern, and he's since left.
Yes, sir.
For, Bill said, $3-an-hour more than he's making. So my question is, in light of that, and in light of what he got from the other city, which is roughly base pay around $6,200 a year by my quick mental calculations, is this going to be enough to get some, because he was only here for a year and a half?
I've kind of looked at that a little bit more as of Friday, when he put in his two weeks. I thought I was actually stepping these two pay, these two positions up a little bit more from where they're at, trying to stay within my allotted budget that I already have. But there's always going to be people, always are going to come and ask for more money. That's going to be a given. But we also have to try and keep in mind, what's, what do the residents want to pay, and what can we afford around here? So we just try, I'm trying to do the best that I can with the budget that I have. But yes, with him being at the basically $3 increment more, that puts him pretty much at the midway of the pay grade 19 for the Superintendent. And he's going basically from the same position he's at now to the same position over there.
Right.
So yes, it wouldn't hurt to increase the pay grades if we're trying to look for more of a more qualified person, the one that's already coming in with a C.
Well, that's a whole lot easier to do from the general fund than it is from the current water budget.
Correct.
Which is where he would have, the, according to your chart, the, it'd be a Water Superintendent, so he's going to come out of the water fund.
Right. Superintendent's going to be split 50/50, but the Water Crew Leader is 100% out of the water.
Okay.
So basically, one of the positions is getting moved from the 16 to the 19. That one's going to be basically split 50/50.
Right.
General 50. General 50% water.
Right.
And then the Water Crew Leader position is 100% going from pay grade 13 to pay grade 16 out of water budget.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Laura, have you had an opportunity to look at the numbers that Mike and Brandon have been discussing, and the financial impact for this fiscal year, because it's just this fiscal year that we need to be most concerned about?
Well, remember, we adopted the pay model. So the pay model, it's not like having a pay scale where we go, we're gonna hire them at pay grade 16 and step four. It doesn't work that way. So that's why we showed you what the pay, the mid and the max is, or the minimum, the mid and max, because without knowing who we're hiring and putting their years of service somewhere else, et cetera, I don't have the exact number. So.
Okay, so when we...
It's a little different. It's different now.
Okay, so Bill, when we're looking at this, do we know if, if we can meet this model for the balance of this year? And I think you said earlier, yes, we'll be, we're gonna be able to, because we're losing three people.
Yeah.
And we may be replacing two people.
Yeah, I, you know, based upon the information we have now, knowing that the hiring gap and that we haven't paid salaries for two individuals for a short period of time relatively, but you're really only gonna talk about three months time difference in the delta in there, I'm anticipating that it's gonna come in and write about what the budget is.
Okay. Okay, do we have any other discussion? Bob?
I don't want to go off the agenda topic, but I do want to, just because I think it applies to the, the restructuring. So Brandon, we had an incident, and Maggie actually asked us to, and I don't want to get into details, but I think it will apply to this, of having the water sample and the letters going out to residents, which we all got.
Yeah, I think that that's probably beyond the scope of our...
My question with that is, with this structure, do you feel like that, something like that would be eliminated, falling through the cracks, by having this structure in place?
There's a possibility of that. A lot of that, I can kind of take majority of the blame off of that one. Being new, coming in with a water license, trying to understand.
I think you're now going a little bit farther than the scope of this agenda item, so.
But having, but having that kind of structure might be able to address those issues a little bit.
Yes, sir. Having people with their water licenses.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 6.6. Discussion action fiscal year 2016, 2017 budget development calendar. Bill?
So this is the fourth time that Laura and I have proposed a budget calendar. So in practice, what we know is we outline dates, and then really, what's become a reality in the last couple of years is, propose the, the calendar, the council kind of accepts it generally, but they only approve the first couple of dates, because really, coordinating the availability of council members can be challenging, especially when you got so many meetings outside the normal city council meeting. So again, I, with Laura in coordination, based upon the deadlines and the, and the information we have, we took last year's, and we kind of adjusted this. I will acknowledge that, you know, I could have, we should have probably done a data call to find out in advance known dates that were, where council members may not have been, they already know that they weren't gonna be present. So again, I'll just kind of say that in this council member, the, the motion requested is to accept the budget calendar, but then to approve really two, the first two budget worksheets. As proposed in your packet, the first proposal was a five-June City Council workshop, where staff would have provided to City Council the internal director's goals and objectives associated with what, what they're hoping to achieve within their budget constraints, and what they prioritize as actions for the next year. And then, given that, council would then come together in early part of June to validate the current goals, revise the current goals as we need, and there's eight of them, but then more importantly, to assign objectives, which prioritize effort, time, and resources, including money, in terms of the budget and manpower. And then we would come back, the second meeting, kind of review those goals and objectives, because staff will have put them together. But we would also look at passing out budget basics, which is your basic information, which doesn't change a whole lot year to year. And then we need to have an INS fund balance discussion associated with how we're going to do that. So I've been, after the staff packets been coordinated, I've got some feedback from the different council members on availability. And ideally, staff would like to have all six council, including the mayor, be present, especially at the first workshop where we're going over goals and objectives. But we do realize that there are probably gonna be meetings where more, you know, that a council member is not going to be at some of these meetings. So I will tell you that I got feedback from Alderman Simpson that the 5th, he will be out of town. I, I proposed another date later in that week, the 8th. Mayor Warner is scheduled to be out of town on that. I then proposed the 14th, which is the next Wednesday after this, the second Wednesday of the month, and actually, the third Wednesday of that month, because the first Wednesday's on a 1st. And I got availability for everyone with a maybe, a question mark, from Alderman Heinzelman. He's got a function that he is playing a large role in, either scheduled the 14th or the 15th. Primary date is the 15th, and then 14th is the alternate. I will also say that moving to the second meeting, which may be easier to solve initially, we have, traditionally, in the last couple of years, we've had a workshop, the second workshop has been prior to the City Council meeting. And so we have that primarily proposed, which would be the 26th of, of June, but we did offer an alternative, which would be to have a workshop on the, the 19th, the Monday prior to that. It's best visualized in the, in the budget calendar, which I have in there. I got some feedback on that, and I'll just kind of speak up, so maybe I can shorten this, that I think most, everyone is available on the 19th. However, Alderman Heinzelman has asked that where possible, that we schedule out, out-of-cycle workshops during council meetings, because he typically takes a half-day off, and he can predict that from that standpoint. So again, we can, and Laura especially can answer the questions in terms of why we picked these dates, especially in August and September, in terms of the, the parageal district, and then the tax assessor, and then the mandatory hearings, and those kinds of things. But the action we need for City Council today is to get concurrence on a, on the first two budget workshops as proposed, or as alternate, and so.
Do, do we have a motion to approve the first two budget workshops as June 14th or 15th at 6:30, and a second workshop on June 26th at 5 o'clock?
I think it's June 14th, not...
June 14th or 15th?
13th or 14th.
Pardon?
Well, 14th is what I proposed.
14th or 15th?
15th is out for sure, so 13th...
I, I have a function either the 14th or the 15th, which is not confirmed yet. So the 15th happens to, to deal with me, not with the council.
Well, no, I'm, I'm asking, if you're, if, if the 15th meeting got pushed forward to the 14th, would you be available on the 15th?
But no, it's not, it's someone else can be there on the 15th.
Well, I can't be there on the 15th.
Oh, you can't be there on the 15th. Okay, so the, the 14th?
14th is the date.
Okay.
An alternate date could be the 13th. I don't, I did not ask people, folks, if the 13th was, was available, because I ran out of time. But that's Tuesday, the 13th. If the 14th wouldn't work, we could do it the 13th.
Does everybody have their palm, their iPhone calendars available to check and see if the 13th would be available?
13th?
The 13th?
13th is available.
Marianne? Is the 14th better for y'all than the 13th?
Right now, I don't have conflict.
I'm, well, if, if Bob has a conflict on the 14th, could we do the 13th or the 14th?
I can go either way.
Are y'all okay with leaving it open on that basis? Okay, everybody would be available as alternate dates, 6:13 or 14 at 6:30, and the second workshop on June the 26th at 5 o'clock. Okay, do we...
Prior to the City Council.
Prior to the City Council meeting. Do we have a motion?
I might not be here the 26th. So I do have a conflict that day. I wasn't asked that earlier today.
Right. I have a blank spot in Heisel on the 26th.
You do?
I do. I didn't, I didn't check.
Okay.
Marianne, do you have an alternate date that you'd want to suggest?
I could do the 19th. I could do the July 3rd. I mean, that's horrible, but...
Yeah, July the 3rd is a holiday, and, and most of us are probably gonna be off on that day.
I could do the 19th. I could do the 10th.
I guess my, my thought was, you said the very first meeting is the one we need to try to have everybody at. The next one, the next few after that, we know we're gonna be missing people. My point is, is we're adding more dates in addition to the meetings we're already gonna be at. I would really like to, if we're gonna be at a City Council meeting, and we have to add a, a budget workshop, I'd rather do it that day, so we don't have extra meetings.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
That was my thought, but I just don't think we're all, and I may not be there the 14th, and you guys will be there without me.
Marianne, thank you. And if you can, if your schedule does work out, then we would prefer to have everybody here, obviously, for as many meetings as we possibly can. So, so do we have a motion to set the first two days in our, in our budget calendar for fiscal year 2017, 2018, as June 6th, June 13th or 14th at 6:30, and a second meeting on June the 26th at 5 o'clock?
So moved.
Marianne's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Simpson's second of the motion. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item number seven, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the City Council and will be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Do we want to, does anybody want to pull any of the items from item seven for discussion? Okay. There being no items to pull, we'll go to item number eight. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on the items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve and/or accept items 8-1 through 8-3?
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Simpson. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item number nine, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mike Colomere has made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Bob Heinzelman is second of the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries.